Jane, is this in Dropbox?
Um.
Kinders.
I don't know if it's in Dropbox, but Shaq has it as the...
Okay. All right, so you're following along there.
Do you want me to print you a copy of your own?
No, no, I was just gonna pull it up on my, on my screen if I, if I had it.
Okay. It should be with...
I can go ahead and put it in Dropbox for you if you want me to.
No, if, if you could, if you could on these that were coming up on public hearings, if you could put it in Dropbox, I'd appreciate that, okay?
This one was just PDF because Shaq didn't have Dropbox.
Yeah, and I, and I saw the PDF Shaq sent, sent, you sent that out in the PDF too, so. Okay? Thank you. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're back in session, and next on our agenda, we have a public hearing for the review and determination of a proposed high-impact permit submitted by Kinder Morgan. Kim, would you read the roll, please?
Commissioner, tell...
Present.
Commissioner Sukla.
Here.
Commissioner Candelaria.
Here.
Administrator Powers.
Here.
Attorney Baxter.
Here.
And Kim Purcell, Montezuma County Clerk and Recorder. The Montezuma County Board of County Commissioners will hold a public hearing for the review and determination of a proposed high-impact permit and special-use permit submitted by Kinder Morgan, Agent Chris Lopez, for the purpose of a new well known as the GP-29 Well. It will be drilled in Section 27 Township 37 North Range 17 West, on land owned by Gary Lynn Folks located at 18476 Road S, Cortez, Colorado, consisting of 6.06 acres, more or less located south of Road S, west of Road 18. The hearing will be held Tuesday, January 29, 2019, at 1:30 PM in the Commissioner's Hearing Room, Montezuma County District Courthouse, 109 West Main, Room 250, Cortez, Colorado. Interested persons may attend and give input. Information may be obtained from the http/monazumacounty.org Web Department's Planning. You may also contact the Planning Department at 970-565-2801 with questions. This file can be inspected in the Planning Department during regular office hours dated this 14th day of January 2019. Kim Purcell, Clerk, Board of County Commissioners, Montezuma County, Colorado, published in the Cortez Journal on Friday, January 18, 2019.
Thank you, Kim. Jane, will you come on up? Kinder Morgan, if you'd like to come up, please?
First of all, I would like to amend the address. The address that is stated on there is for a barn on the property. The address that was given by G.I., uh, GIS is 18080 Road S.
Road S?
Road S.
S, okay.
That is the address for the well pad.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying that. You guys wanna tell us anything special about this, or what we need to know about?
Uh, this is Agent Chris Lopez.
Mm-hmm.
He has done very well with his due diligence on this project, and he will be able to let you know more about it.
Okay.
Sure. Good afternoon, Commissioners, again thank you for having us here today. Again, this is for a new CO2 well that will be known as the GP-29. You know, they gave the land description of it. It will be on private property. It's private minerals that are being developed by this well on private surface. We do have a surface use agreement in place with Mr. Folks. The location of the well has actually been chosen because there's a previous well that was plugged and abandoned there. This was drilled in the 1950s, I believe. It was the Folks' number-one well. So there's actually previously been a well pad on this location in the past, and so partly the, it was chosen due to the geology we had. You know, there were some logs that our geologists were able to look at from that pre-old well. Now, that old well never was produced. It was plugged and abandoned, and so this new well bore will be located approximately 90 to 100 feet away from that plugged and abandoned.
Was that well for gas and oil that was back in the 60s, not CO2?
Um, again, I'm not sure what they built for, 'cause it was dry and abandoned, so it never produced, but, no, again, so there was previously a location where we planned to be. There is no sensitive wildlife habitat in this area. There's no water wells within the distance of the state requirement for water well testing, so we're outside of any of that. We do have, I will, actually, I just got those late Friday, so we did receive approvals from the COGCC late Friday, so I can provide you copies of the approved form to, to a, from the state of Colorado.
Okay.
So we are approved with, with the state at this point for this well. And we did meet with Clint Watson last week, and we've submitted our permit fees and permit applications, so we're good with our permit as well. So we did an inspection last week on it, so driveway permits...
And did Rob come out as well?
Clint had already been out with Rob, so we just met with Clint, and we met with Empire Electric as well. There's a couple of power poles out there that they're gonna go ahead and raise for us, you know, not necessarily part of this project, but it's part of the overall project. We're working with Empire as well, though.
Okay.
So Rob Engelhardt from Road and Bridge also went out with Clint and inspected the road as well.
Okay. All right. You know approximately when you plan to start this, if approved?
Uh, ASAP. If I'd like to initiate construction, February 4th, as soon as...
Any questions, Commissioners, any?
I, I don't, I don't have anything. The Planning Commission has obviously seen this and recommended it, or...
Yes.
Okay. Okay, with no discussion here, we'll open this up to the public. If there's anybody in the public that wishes to speak to this, please state your name and address and come to the microphone, please.
Ellen Foster, County Road T. Dolores. I would've asked these questions at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, but the agenda and the packet had not been posted online before the meeting, so I didn't have a chance to read them. And I guess that was a IT mix-up of some sort. So, um, it's been a while since Kinder Morgan has come for a permit, and it's been a while since their trucks have rolled down County Road 20 and then west on S. And there were complaints, several complaints, about road noise and truck traffic from people who lived on Road 20. And as a matter of fact, my sister-in-law lived on that corner. And I spent a lot of time in that yard when trucks were driving by, and you could not have a conversation as a truck came by and stopped at the corner of 20 and S and made the turn. So I personally know how loud those trucks can be, and I'd like you to just clarify a couple of things in the permit for me. And if you could, look here on Kinder Morgan's traffic plan. It says that there will be 400 belly dump loads of gravel delivered to construct the well location, and 56 semi-loads to move the rig in. And then Shaq, if you go to page 10, the next page, the threshold standard 25 is noise, and it states, quote, "The use of jake brakes by semi-trucks will be prohibited on county roads." So what I'd like to know is a belly dump truck, a semi-truck? And if belly dump trucks delivering gravel will be prohibited from using their jake brakes? Do you see, see the point, Mike?
My point is, is I would better listen to the noise than somebody live than not use the brakes and somebody die. So I would not be for saying no jake brakes, because the jake brake is actually a safety function.
Okay, but this is, this is not really, I guess my point is not really what you would prefer. It's what, what does that mean? This is a legal contract that people will be bound by, and, and I wanna know technically, what does that mean?
Is this in the permit, the current permit?
Yes.
This language is in the current permit that Kinder Morgan has for this well site, then?
Then what?
Yeah.
Then I think it states it very clearly.
No jake brakes?
No jake brakes.
That's, that's what...
Now, realize that engine brakes also have mufflers on them, so, I mean, there are muffled engine brakes.
Well...
Correct. So are we talking a decibel that is bothering, or what are we talking about? Because I'm with Commissioner Sukla. If you take away the use of the design of a vehicle and you get in trouble, that's not what we wanna do either. So those trucks are designed to be used with a engine brake.
Right.
So I guess...
But not, not as a, as a standard, I don't know how to say it, more of an emergency kind of a thing.
That's incorrect. Engine brakes are used every day, and they're not as an emergency situation.
Okay. So maybe it is a decibel level thing, you know? I, I have been after this noise threshold issue for, I don't know, would you say two years, Keenan?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And, and if you wanna go there, I can go there again.
I guess what I'm saying, would it, would it be more palatable if the, all trucks have the...
Muffler.
The muffled engine brakes, which most of them do by design nowadays?
Well, I don't know what the trucks had that were driving by when I was out there in the yard.
And I don't either, and I don't know what it was, and, and we're, obviously, as we stated this morning, going to revise this, you know, the Land Use Code and the Comprehensive Plan, and maybe we should look at that.
Someday in the future. I'm talking about this permit here today.
Correct.
So it's important in my mind that contracts have consistent requirements. So the traffic plan also says that Kinder Morgan policy requires that all trucks avoid the use of engine brakes between the hours of 7:00 PM and 7:00 AM. And this conflicts with the statement in the threshold standard 25 that says the use of jake brakes by semi-trucks will be prohibited on county roads. To me, that means 24 hours a day. So I think that the traffic plan should be corrected to, to reflect the prohibition 24 hours a day. Okay, so my next question relates to the speed limit. The traffic plan on page 12 states that Kinder Morgan policy requires that all large trucks obey a 25 mile-per-hour speed limit on county roads. However, the posted speed limit on the road is 30 miles an hour for trucks. And so this also relates to jake brakes. It would seem like if the truck was already traveling at 25 miles an hour, that would be slow enough that he would already be geared down and not need to use his jake brakes. He might be in the habit of using his brake, jake brakes, but not need to use them. And so I'd like to know which speed limit will apply to Kinder Morgan's trucks? It's the posted speed limit of 30, or their policy of 25?
I'm pretty sure, and Mr. Lopez could probably answer it, but it's 25 miles an hour, anything that's out there being worked on for Kinder Morgan, and correct me if I'm wrong, but that is their limitation, and if, just like it says, if you're, if you're going over that, then you're basically removed from the project. But the posted limit is just for other vehicles, such as somebody hauling hay or something like that. It would be 30 miles an hour, but anything that is being done for Kinder Morgan, I believe, is the 25 miles an hour.
This is for large construction trucks, again, pickup trucks, company vehicles, for example, like S. large gravel trucks, semi-trucks.
Correct.
Those trucks, yes, are held to that.
So...
And the jake brakes are there for the safety of the vehicle?
So I'm just curious now, since the 25 mile-an-hour speed is just Kinder Morgan's policy, a truck wouldn't be subject to a speeding ticket from the sheriff unless he was going over 30 miles an hour?
That would be correct.
Attorney Baxter?
I think that's probably right. I mean, the sheriff has discretion on how they're gonna enforce the laws. I don't know if the sheriff's gonna pull somebody over for going 31, or, I mean, there's reasons you can get pulled over for going under that, but, no, we can't answer that for you.
Okay.
I would comment on that, though, and I'll use common sense in this comment. If I'm making $90 an hour hauling the gravel, and stated it, if I get reported speeding, then I'm taken off of the job. Or would be more worried about a speeding ticket for $120. I would think that the $90 an hour would be way more valuable to me and dictate what I, my outcome, what I would actually do. I wouldn't speed so that I, Kinder Morgan, would kick me out, 'cause there's another truck lined up right around the corner to haul the gravel, isn't there, Commissioner Candelaria? And $90 an hour, seven days a week, I don't know how long it takes, it adds up to a lot of money.
Well, last time around, people who lived on Road 20 did complain, and felt like they were ignored, so...
About the speed or the jake brakes?
Both.
Both? Okay.
Was it Kinder Morgan traffic? I guess I just, I mean, again, I know we do have a lot of traffic, and that's why we do a traffic plan. We recognize that we have a lot of traffic, but there's other operations, I guess, also in the area, so, I mean, we, we do get specific complaints to Kinder Morgan vehicles at our office, and those are dealt with for Kinder Morgan, but I guess I just make the comment, too, that we're not the only activity in the area. We are a big activity in the area, but...
So are you saying that, that a subcontractor, you would not...
Oh, I don't know when this was, or I guess I don't know what the date was, or if we had activity in the area. I guess my only comment would be is recognizing Kinder Morgan is a big industrial activity in this county. There are other activities that involve semi-trucks that also have jake brakes and other things that are, are out of our control, I guess, so I just make the comment, I don't know what the incident was specific when you were outside, so...
Right.
But I do also understand that we do have that impact, so...
Okay. So Shaq, if you would turn to page 16, this is, this was included in the high-impact permit application. It's the 2018 workover driving directions, and you'll see that seven wells are listed on this that appear to be totally unrelated to this permit. And so I'd appreciate it if maybe Mr. Lopez could explain what relationship these wells have to the GP-29, and if work on them will continue into 2019.
Sure, that was a, I'd be happy to explain that. That was a PDF mistake. That was an addition from our road driving, our truck route that we submit, and so our approved truck route with Montezuma County, and this was actually driving directions we had given last, out last year, so I apologize for that mistake. This was information that was given to trucks for the trucks routes for some of the projects we worked on last year, so yes, that is my mistake, so that, that can be removed.
So this is an irrelevant document?
Yes, when I was combining PDFs, I, I missed that these two pages were, were still in there, so... But again, the point is, is that we do follow the approved truck routes with the county for all of our projects.
Okay, so now that you've listed one of these on here, it's kind of piqued my interest. The HWD-2 is a wastewater injection well in the Hoven Reef area, and the MWD-1 will service your new well, the GP-29. So I'm, I'm just curious, how close to capacity are your injection wells, and do you foresee having to start a new one?
That would be a more technical question for one of our engineers that works on our injection permits, but my understanding is, no, at this point in time, there's no capacity issues with our injection wells.
Okay, and if we could turn to page 15. So my final comment is about the maps that are included in these applications. This, this map shows the seven wells that were included, and not the GP-29.
The purpose of this map is just an approved truck route map, so yes, my mistake, but we have very specific driving directions in the application itself that discuss how we plan to access the GP-29 well.
Okay. And then if we could go to page 19? This is a more specific map about the GP-29 location, which doesn't identify a single road. So someone from the general public, I mean, you all who are immersed in this all the time can look at that and say, "Oh, yeah, I know right where that is," but someone from the general public, I mean, can't we make these maps a little bit more useful? Can't, I mean, Kinder Morgan has very sophisticated mapping programs. It would be a very easy thing for them to put some road numbers on these maps for the convenience of the general public. And so I would just ask that you require them to do that in a font that doesn't need a magnifying glass to read.
If I might comment, I would definitely, I definitely can see where Ms. Foster's coming from regarding roads. So this map that's being referenced is a very specific map for a COGCC permit regarding hydrology, so it's at a specific scale, and it addresses specific issues, which is the 1,000-foot buffer for hydrology purposes. So again, the map that's being referenced, it has nothing to do with access or anything, so, but I do hear Ms. Foster's point, when the public looks at maps, it's helpful, but again, we do do specific maps for COGCC per their rules and guidelines that we also include with the county permits that aren't required, and we do discuss driving directions very specifically within the application for this project, so, but, so I guess I would make the comment, I, I hear the point, but again, the maps are very specific.
And I think that your, your truck route map is, to the well site's gonna be one that would be of more interest to Ms. Foster than, than a hydrology map, and I, I guess, I can understand if this is a hydrology map sent to GOCC for a very specific set of rules, I don't imagine the public's ever gonna see this hydrology map, and it's not gonna mean anything to them if they do see it. So, I mean, I, I take your point, but, but when Kinder Morgan, where, where the public is going to be concerned and know how things are gonna go is when they, when they distribute their, their truck route map's gonna show the roads, the path, and, and exactly where that well site is on a map, and, and I think then that's the map that will show you the roads and what, what you're wanting to know. But, but I understand...
But there was no map in this application that showed a truck route to the GP-29, because the GP-29 wasn't on it.
But it was described. We did describe it.
It was described, but...
Per the, per the application requirement, but I, again, that's, you know, I, I hear the point. An access road map can be a useful tool for the public.
Okay, so, so just so I'm clear, I wanna go back to this engine brake issue and confirm that engine brakes will not be used on county roads. Am I clear on that? Because that's what's, that's what's on, that's what the noise threshold says?
Can you give us a little more information about the jake brake? Was it discussed at Planning and zoning? Was?
It was not, and if you don't mind, if I let Chris know what's in there. Chris is really the one who enforces a lot of the truck, traffic, and the use of jake brakes, I don't see me more familiar with the trucks.
Our policy has always been no jake brakes, 7:00 PM, 7:00 AM. We allow them, we do talk about that when we have a pre-job kickoff meetings, that, you know, jake brakes are used when you need them. You don't have to be shipped in with them. You don't have to use them on every little hill, you know, so use with discretion. We'll try to keep it to a minimum.
And so will there be gravel deliveries after 7:00 PM at night? Yeah, see, so, I mean, they have this policy that says that the drivers will avoid the use of engine brakes between the hours of 7:00 PM and 7:00 AM. Well, they're not even on the road, then. I mean, what...
We could have, once we're drilling a well...
Can we get you to come up here, Chris, and introduce yourself, and, I'm sorry, I just...
Once we're drilling a well, we can have truck traffic at night, you know, water trucks, cement trucks coming in. Those, so in those situations, we would prohibit jake brakes, 7:00 PM, 7:00 AM.
Yeah, well, I think that for the people who live on those roads, the biggest impact is gonna be 400 truckloads of gravel during the day, you know? One after another, after another. I mean, I don't know how many days it takes to deliver 400 truckloads, but seems like a lot.
Depends on how many trucks you have.
Several trips, yeah, that's several trips.
I mean, it's, it could be several days, it could be a very short period of time. I, uh...
Okay, so...
No telling on that one.
So I guess I still haven't gotten an answer. Are, is the use of jake brakes prohibited on county roads?
And especially if it's in our permit, then yes, it's prohibited.
Okay, thank you.
Is there, is there any way, just, just for clarity's sake, so that we, somebody had mentioned there's other truck traffic out there. In fact, Montezuma County has belly dumps and everything, it's gonna be very similar to what's coming to your site. Is there any feasible or simple way for the contractors that are, that are hauling for Kinder Morgan to put some kind of an emblem on that truck, a KM, or something to identify that they are working for Kinder Morgan? I mean, I, that, that may be asking a lot, but it would save some confusion on who we're pointing the finger at if we had something that designated the contractors, the subcontractors, a magnetic sign, a, a grill placard or something that put KM or something on there, so that somebody on the road that saw a truck doing 45 miles an hour and blah, 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 I could say, "Yeah, that was a Kinder Morgan truck. They had the Kinder Morgan emblem on their front grille, so I know it was, you were working for Kinder Morgan." So we don't, so we don't end up with this confusion where somebody's blaming somebody, maybe for something they did, maybe it totally unrelated, maybe it's some other guy with a belly dump that's a private contractor hauling gravel to somebody's driveway, and everybody's saying, "Well, I was a Kinder Morgan driver, they were delivering gravel. I know it was Kinder..." You know, it might, it might help your public relations image if you could make your subs and the people that are driving on this job, make, make them identifiable, and maybe that would then give the drivers and stuff a little more cognizance about running 25 miles an hour, maybe not have to use a jake brake ever if you're only doing 25 miles an hour.
I think that it would hurt the, the truck drivers, though, because I know how it works, so they like, "We're gonna, we got 15 trucks lined up for today. Something happens, two of them are canceled. They got two more that comes in at the last minute. Hey, two trucks are out, you're the second on the list, you're here, you gotta be here." to be here in thirty minutes to start hauling gravel. And actually, the point of it for me is, is why is it fair that Kinder Morgan can't use their jake brakes, but everybody else can? That's what I would like to know. Why is it fair for Montezuma County to use jake brakes on the road or the farmer, but not Kinder Morgan?
That's a good point.
Why are we picking and choosing who follows what law and who doesn't?
That's a valid point.
And I'm going to go back to the design of the vehicle. The vehicles are designed that way for a specific reason, for safety. And if we remove that safety aspect of it, then I think we're doing something that's totally wrong.
I do too.
So, and even at twenty-five miles an hour, I think you would minimize it almost to nothing, but to absolutely say it's nothing doesn't make good sense to me to limit that. I mean.
Then I think we need to go back and change our permit.
I think, I think. I think that's probably something that should be done.
If that's the case, and if this is only applicable to Kinder Morgan and their contractors and their trucks, you're right, that's discriminatory. We're discriminating against them and letting anybody else run however they want to run. So I, I think we go back and reevaluate that permitting process and look at that and say, maybe this is where we need to change that. Or we put it on everybody. You get to go one way or the other. You either put it on everybody, or you put it on nobody.
Well, right now, I think it probably is on everybody that's asking for these permits. Is, is, right, it's going to be in there, and so it is, we're not discriminating against Kinder Morgan.
No, but I'm just saying, we're discriminating against other guys that are driving semi-trucks and hauling gravel and doing their job.
Right, and, you know, as far as whether or not something's enforced, I mean, again, it's going to be probably, we don't tell the sheriff what to do, but if someone's coming to us with a complaint, saying they're in violation of their permit, your land use code, it's up to us what we decide to pursue, if anything. I mean, I think that, I would hope that if somebody uses their jake brake one time because of a safety reason, we're not going to go after them. I mean, that's probably, that's within your discretion to do that. You can say, no, take them to court, try to find them. But you all might choose to not go after somebody who was, you know, trying not to hit another car or whatever the situation is. So you all can choose what, you know, whether or not you enforce it. But I do think it's probably in all these permit requests. It's, you know, it's not just Kinder Morgan that's being.
Yeah, but you brought up a really good point, and this is the time of year that the ranchers are feeding. I know that road, I know how many hills is up it, I know how many hills go down it, because I've actually drove a semi that had a jake brake up to the Oliver Farm, which is right on the way to where these guys would be going, especially if they go off of Road U, which we got the severance tax of one million dollars because of Kinder Morgan, the severance tax to rebuild that road for a million dollars that we just did. And the guy pulls out, the guy's hauling his gravel twenty-five miles an hour, you got willows on both sides, say you're down by James Snyder, and the truck pulls out, the guy's pulling, he's weighing eighty-five thousand pounds with his truck, and he's like, hit the jake brake, or I'm going to get kicked off the job, or let's just run right over the guy. I would feather he hit the jake brake, and if the neighbor across the road, sleeping in, gets upset, I'm for saving the life. I, you was going to add to that.
I don't like it when we take away a safety component of the design of a vehicle. That's my, that's my biggest complaint, is I don't think you should restrict any safety aspect of the design of a vehicle.
So, speaking to safety, the reason the jake brake is there is to eliminate using the air brake, which is your foot pedal. When you use your foot pedal, you're draining the supply of air. If you do that continually, you lose air supply. Another scenario that could occur, this is a little far-fetched, but it could occur, is you tear an air line and you lose your air brake, how are you going to shut that vehicle down? And let's say, on the way off chance, somebody does tear an air line, they can't get that vehicle shut down, and the contract says no jake brake, and so they don't use it, who's liable for that rule?
All good discussion.
I think Ms. Foster brought up a good point, that we should put the jake brake back in instead of take it off, that they should be allowed to use their jake brake.
For safety, safety purposes.
Yes.
Ms. Foster, and I apologize, Ms. Buck, I'm just going back to you, is it strictly the decibel limit of the engine brake that's so offensive, or is it?
I would say it's the decibel and the repetitiveness of it, truck after truck after truck.
But it's temporary.
But it's very temporary.
Yeah, it's temporary for this well. So they're drilling this well, this is supposed to be a step-out well to establish a new zone and hopefully drill more wells. So this, I mean, this one instance is temporary, but this is an ongoing project, it's been going on for thirty years. How many years have we had that truck route going down twenty and S? I mean, those people have been living with that noise for a long time, and they're tired of it. You know, and as I say a lot, there's value to quality of life, that's why a lot of people live here. Everything does not boil down to the bottom dollar. And I understand that Kinder Morgan provides income to the county and jobs and everything, but we can't just totally ignore people's lives and people who live here. There has to be consideration for them too, and I don't think it would impact Kinder Morgan's profit margin by very much if they did that. And it would be quite the PR effort between them and the community. They keep saying that they want to be a good neighbor. Well, let's just slow it down a little bit out there, let's quiet it down a little bit out there. People who live there will be happy, they'll stop complaining, I'll stop getting up here and complaining. I mean, that ought to be worth something, huh?
No, you won't. No, you won't.
I don't know, I take offensive to saying, well, if they're going to be a good neighbor when they give away all the computers to the schools and they have did all of the charitable work that they've did in the community, and to have you say that, well, let's have them be a good neighbor, when they, if you add it up, I don't know what their budget is for the community work that they've done, the computers out at Luis Ariola, but that's offensive to say that that organization has not helped this community sponsoring baseball teams, basketball teams, people with cancer. I could go on and on and on, so. Maybe you need to look in the mirror. How many people are you out there taking care of like that, like they are?
Well, I don't really want to get into a debate about that.
Well, if it's a noise issue, and we're not going to get past the repetitive nature of it, because that is the truck route, the repetitive nature of that.
I mean, we could change the truck route, we could send them down Road S.
Well, maybe we'd like to, we'd all like to have something, but.
Yeah, well, there's options.
But that's, that's not in the bailiwick right now, and that's not what they're confronted with right now, because that is the right right now. I would like for, if, on the outside part of it, I have to believe it's a noise issue with you, that you hear the truck and as the engine brake is making its noise. I'd like to see a decibel reading out there, or standing in your front porch on your front yard with a decibel meter, and show me that it goes above our accepted guidelines for noise.
Okay, so that brings into question the conflicting terminology of the noise threshold, which I'm not prepared to go into all over again.
Okay, good.
But you know that it exists. So, what noise level would you hold them to?
Right now, it's at ninety decibels or a hundred and twenty?
Seventy.
Seventy?
Over a certain distance on, from your property line. Well, that's for another day. We'll stick with this today. Thanks. Gala?
Gala Pock, seven-six-seven-two, County Road CC, Pleasant View. This discussion you just had about jake brakes is all very interesting and absolutely demonstrates my point. You feel that noise and the profit that Kinder Morgan can make and the taxes they can pay should trump your zoning, basically, because what we're talking about for this well, the previous well, the other well, the one back, you know, two months ago, two years ago, twenty years ago, these are all in agricultural and residential areas. I'm not aware that any of them have been in an industrial area, but as soon as they start drilling a well, they start hauling in those four hundred loads of gravel, and then, of course, they have to haul that four hundred loads of gravel back out, and that takes, oh, you know, that can be six months, a year.
A lot of times, they give the gravel to neighbors.
They still have to haul it. It depends upon how far they haul it, but it's all going to be hauled back, well, not all of it, they always need some.
But I would object to saying that it's all about the profit, it's about safety. The jake brake is a safety feature on the truck, and that's what we're talking about, safety.
Okay, okay, safety, but the safety is noise, and these are in agricultural and residential areas. To make this work out, you need to rezone, the entire county is industrial, then everything will be just fine, and when people, as the ordinance says to begin with, this is designed so that people know what they're getting into when they move into the area, then they'll know they're moving into an industrial area, and they can expect heavy truck traffic, noise, lots of activity, noise of all kinds. That backup beep is as noisy, is as annoying as a jake brake, in my opinion.
I'm with you.
And that's permanent for me.
You can thank OSHA for that, yeah, go talk to OSHA about that, not us.
I know that, but it makes an area industrial. I have a house that's a mile away from the Cal Canyon compressor station, and I hear that backup beep all the time, even now. The thing was built years ago, well, a few years ago, but it just turns the area into an industrial area. And to resolve all these issues, it's simple, just zone the entire county as industrial, because that's what you're doing. We heard Mr. Lopez say that Kinder Morgan is a big industrial activity. He's absolutely right, it is, and we need to recognize that. Just zone us all industrial, the ones that are already here are just out of luck, but at least people coming into the county will know what they're getting into anyway. This is not, when you look at the map and you see residential and agriculture, that's Anytime Kinder Morgan, or anybody else drills a well, it's industrial, although I'll have to say that when Questar drilled an oil well down south of my place several years ago, it certainly wasn't as industrial as Kinder Morgan. They didn't bring any gravel at all, and they had very few, very little traffic. I think there were seven trucks of the drilling rig and supporting stuff, and that was about it. But Kinder Morgan's addicted to gravel, and we're not going to get away from that. So just zone us all industrial and everything will be okay.
Are you sure you want to see your property tax when we do that, Gala? Vacant industrial, I think you might want to stay ag and residential. I just think you might.
Well, now, I've heard, I've heard you gentlemen say that our property tax assessment is based on use, not on zoning, in which case, my use will still be the same, it'll still be a little farm.
We're going to zone you.
So it wouldn't impact my.
We're going to zone you. We're going to zone, just like you asked, we're going to. I think that might be, that might be the key right there, gentlemen.
Well, really.
I think she's answered something for us.
That really is, it's industrial, and Larry Don mentioned that he didn't think that these drivers were going to jeopardize their ninety-dollar-an-hour jobs by speeding. Well, I hate to say you're wrong, Larry Don, but you're wrong about that.
Wouldn't be the first time.
I've seen plenty of them.
You know, the deal is about your statement about industrial, I know how passionate you are, but we had, they had this same conversation over on the Eastern Slope, and it's semi-trucks and it's jake brakes, but instead of hauling gravel, they're hauling corn silage, and they're hauling sugar beets, and they're hauling, and it's the exact same scenario except for it's bigger than four hundred loads, it's thousands of loads, because that's what they raised there, and it's still considered ag, but it's the same activity, the same sound, the same, yeah, same noise, so.
Same trucks.
I don't know if they should zone over there where all the cornfields is industrial as well, but.
Well, it is the case that when Brad White plows the fields close to my house, I hear his tractor, and it's probably as loud as a truck, but I know that it's temporary, and I also know that if I meet that tractor on the road, he's not going to run me off. Now, those gravel trucks, there's been a couple of times that it's been a little scary, but I know that those tractors and the threshing machines, even though they're enormous, are not going to run me into the ditch. So that's, that's a difference. I'm not opposed to all noise or anything like that, because I know agriculture can be pretty noisy, pretty stinky, you know, but when I move into an agricultural area, I accept that, I know what's happening. I know I'm going to be listening to tractors and breathing dust, and listening to cows move twenty-four hours a day, but I expect that. If I didn't want that, I'd live in town, but when I move out there expecting to listen to the cows move all the time, I wasn't expecting gravel trucks. Thank you.
Are you ready for more comments?
You betcha, that's what we're here for.
Jerry Koski, Zone Row, County Road X. What I'd say about the jake brake thing is that you hear trucks sometimes that leave their jake brakes on continuously, and every time they shift, they go, you know, and I think that if they use jake brakes discriminately, I think they definitely need it, and that, you know, it's going to be an impact, but it's not going to be a long-term impact. They probably gravel this pad in a couple of weeks. So it's not, it's not forever, sure, it's an impact, but it's not ongoing forever. I'd be more concerned about what the oil rig trucks do to our county road, you know, and you guys are in charge of that impact and taking care of those county roads, and I think you've done a pretty good job, but in this case, on County Road S, we could have some severe damage with those heavier trucks that are going over this, over this road. But, and you guys will take care of that, that's your job. I would speak in favor of this project. CO2 development is some of the cleanest, environmentally friendly impacts we can have in this county. Also, it also produces pretty good income, so I think that going forward, sure, we're going to have some short-term impacts on these, on these well sites, but the benefits are going to long outweigh the disadvantage of the short-term impacts of building pads and that sort of thing. When you see a pipe coming out of the ground in Montezuma County or Delores County with a pressure valve on it, and it goes immediately into another pipeline that goes to a compressor station or a de-watering facility, what can be safer and cleaner than that, you know? And there are several of those in the area that you're talking about working on, and at Delores County, given Kinder Morgan has had some problems with transparency and not being clearly open to this county and to the mineral owners and the people in the county, but I think maybe that's passed, but going forward. that's passed, but going forward, doesn't have anything to do with these people here, but I would hope that Kinder Morgan would be more cooperative, more open for their actions and their accountability, and I think that they ought to be receptive to what you commissioners are gonna do for them here today, and, you know, we, it could be a situation where they meet a lot of resistance to more development in this county, given the past history and one thing or another, so, I had a little bit of experience with the, the drilling facilities and building pads and that sort of thing, but you just have to take the best route, it probably impacts the fewest people, and, and go with it, you know, so, thank you much.
Thank you, Jerry, is there anybody else?
Rob Pope, three-eleven North Broadway, just on a different note, you know, I get to go through a lot of these applications, and I wanna commend Kinder Morgan for this application that they prepared, it's comprehensive, it's complete, and it's concise, and I have seen parchment paper come through this, I, I mean, just ridiculous stuff, I appreciate the fact that they take the time and effort to do a complete application and make sure it's concise and thorough, and it was, the other thing I like to see, when these things come before either planning and zoning or the Board of County Commissioners, is the people that are on the truck route and the people that are directly impacted to show up at these meetings and give comments, that holds more weight to me than anything, I, I, I think if people wanna fight battles, they ought to fight their own battles, there is issues with, with truck traffic and truck routes and noise and everything else, but I, I really like to see the primary people here that have the problems talking about it, just carries a lot of weight when, when the involved parties are here to do that, so, you know, I, I just want, there's been a lot of talk about what goes on with Kinder Morgan, from what I see, they, they try their best to be a good neighbor, and they try their best to put forth documents and applications that are concise, and I, for one, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Rob, is there anybody else here that'd like to speak?
MB Maffey, Road 20, I think if nothing else, this really shows the need to revamp or refresh, revise, whatever verb we wanna use, the land use code and land use plan as soon as possible, so as other applications from Kinder Morgan or anybody else start to come up and inconsistencies are seen, rather than everybody standing up and saying the same inconsistencies more than once, maybe letting, you guys letting the public know what your plans are for that and how, how you're gonna proceed or what kind of help you need, really being proactive along those lines, that would probably be a really, I think, a really helpful thing to do, and again, this would be like the sooner the better, probably, in some planful sort of way, so that I, I'll speak for myself, know there's some action to bring to, up-to-date, a land use code now that was adopted, I think, in nineteen ninety-eight, you know, it's time to have it fixed, so I think that would, you know, some of the stuff that went on today, if, if that had been, if those adjustments had been, maybe there wouldn't have been so much discussion, so I think really letting us know, public, whoever, how soon you're gonna do that and how you're gonna proceed, that's a really forward-going step, I, I just, this is a really good example of why we needed different, new, refreshed, concise and consistent land use code, I think, and it's up to you guys to sort of lead off on that effort.
Anybody else? We'll close this portion of the, close this public hearing, go right ahead, Chris.
I just might make one other comment, again, Chris Lopez of Kinder Morgan, again, this was great discussion today, I really appreciate all the public comment that was provided, I think people bring a lot of, you know, relevant issues up, and that's the purpose of this, this meeting here and this public hearing, so, again, I'll also just state I do appreciate Ellen Foster's thoroughness, she's very thorough when it comes to reviewing these applications as well, so, when it comes to the jake brake use, that, that is something that, in discussing within the permit, I guess my only comment would be, and maybe a request, would be, we actually kinda self-impose these on ourselves, so it's in language that we included in the permit ourselves, so we kinda self-impose this prohibition of jake brake use, within that same category, this is item number twenty-five in the thresholds and standards, we also discuss temporarily exceeding and mitigating those as well, so I guess my comment would be, based on the discussion today and recognizing the safety issues around jake brake use, you know, we're still, I guess we'd like to consider restricting ourselves to those same hours of the seven o'clock to seven o'clock, we are very mindful, and we have, we have construction kickoff meetings, pre-spud meetings with drilling, so we have a meeting with every contractor that we're doing work with, and we go over the use of jake brakes and not using jake brakes and speed limits and the two strikes, and, and I've seen truck drivers be thrown off of Kinder Morgan locations in the two years I've been here, so I do know our operation guys, it's, it's, it's very strict around, you know, you break the law with Kinder Morgan policy, you won't be working on our location, so my request would be, I guess, although we state we will be temporarily exceeding some of these volumes and things, I guess I would lean towards that language of restricting the jake brake use from seven PM to seven AM for safety as well, and again, we do our best to mitigate any use of those, and, and request they don't use those unless it's for safety only.
Any further discussion, commissioners?
All of the requirements have been met?
Yes.
Okay, well, then I would move that we accept the proposed high-impact permit and special use permit submitted by Kinder Morgan, Agent Chris Lopez, for the purpose of a new well known as the GP twenty-nine well.
What about the modification that he was requesting from the seven to seven?
With that modification of the.
No, no jake brakes from seven to seven?
From nineteen hundred to oh-seven-hundred.
Second.
So, moving to seconded to approve the high-impact permit and special use permit submitted by Kinder Morgan on a well known as the GP twenty-nine well with jake brake restrictions from seven in the evening till seven in the morning, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, gentlemen, that puts us down to the county attorney's report.
Can we close that?
Oh, excuse me, close, we'll close this public hearing.